On Monday, August tenth, two thousand twenty, at six thirty P. M. First item on the agenda is the roll call. And I'll be doing it from here. Our commissioners that are in, uh, board members that are in attendance. Tom Vonhoff.
Here.
Ray Huber.
Here.
Lee Watson.
Here.
Gary Hartman, here. And attending through phone due to the COVID nineteen restrictions. Our, uh, board members. Ed Robbie.
Here.
Donna Hentges.
Here.
And Barbara Johnson.
Here.
And, uh, county staff that's, uh, present. Brad Davis, our planning manager. Marty Schmitz, zoning administrator. Greg Wagner, senior planner. Is Nathan Hall gonna be attending? Nathan Hall, associate planner. Also attending by, um, phone is Scott County Commissioner Tom Wolfe. And in attending, uh, in person, Barb Simonson, our deputy clerk to the board. So, um, next item on the agenda would be the approval of the previous minutes from July thirteenth, two thousand twenty, the Board of Adjustment. You've been, um, all given the minutes from the meeting. Has there, is there any comments or changes? Not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the...
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion to approve the minutes from the previous Board of Adjustment meeting.
I'll second it.
Motion by Commissioner Vonhoff, second by...
I'll second that motion, Robbie.
Second by Commissioner Huber. Any further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, one at a time. Commissioner Vonhoff.
Aye.
Commissioner Huber.
Aye.
Commissioner Watson.
I abstain.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Com- Commissioner Robbie.
Aye.
And Commissioner Hentges.
Aye.
And Commissioner Hartman, aye. The minutes have been approved. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for Dustin Rasmussen variance, number PL twenty twenty dash zero four two. It's a request for a variance to reduce the required structure setback from thirty-five feet to twenty-seven feet to a local right-of-way. It's located Section twenty, Helena Township. The current zoning is A one. And Greg Wagner will present.
Mr. Chair, commissioners, I'm gonna try and talk through the mask. They want us to keep these on if we can, so, um, if you can't hear me, let me know. But, uh, for the commissioners on the phone...
Excuse me.
Yeah.
None of our, our screens supposed to be on?
Oh. We'll find out.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Sorry about that.
All right, um, commissioners, for those teleconferencing, if you're watching via YouTube, um, I'm just gonna go through the attachments that were in the staff report, um, and just talk about each thing. So, on the screen right now is the site location map. Uh, the subject property again is at, uh, two five zero zero one Saint Benedict Road. Uh, this is Section twenty, Helena Township. So, for locational purposes, Saint Benedict Road is a, uh, Helena Township road. And then two hundred fiftieth Street West is also a township road. Uh, Saint Benedict is located just to the northwest of City of New Prague. On the screen now is an overhead aerial photo of the property. So, up near the road, on the north side of the lot, you can see the existing, uh, home. Uh, there's a detached garage just south of there, and then a couple, uh, other small accessory buildings. Uh, the request before you tonight is a variance from the road right-of-way. Uh, the setback from a road right-of-way from a local street is thirty-five feet. Uh, the applicant, uh, has a, uh, old, old home that was originally, originally constructed, back in nineteen ten. So, this is a very old structure, uh, was developed with the original hamlet of Saint Benedict. Um, and you could see it was close to the road, which a lot of homes back then were closer to the road than they are today. Um, the home does meet the setback, uh, but what the applicant is requesting is a variance to construct a deck. So, the next attachment in the staff report I'm putting on the screen is the applicant's narrative, which has a picture of the front of the home, uh, and then a picture of the proposed deck. So, for the most part, this would be a ground-level deck. You can see right off the front door. By ordinance, ground-level decks that are eighteen inches or less are exempt from setbacks. Uh, but as this property goes north, um, there's a stream, so the property slopes to the north. So, the north side of the deck gets higher in elevation as the ground slopes away. So, it would be higher than eighteen inches. So, part of the deck would be exempt, part of the deck would have to meet setback based on the height. Um, so, staff spoke with the applicant, and, uh, he went and met with Helena Township, uh, because it's a township road. Uh, the township recommendation was in the staff report. Uh, they recommended approval of the request. Um, we wanted to make sure that the township was comfortable with, with a deck going closer to the road, uh, and they were. So, now, I'm gonna flip to, it's kind of a black-and-white aerial photo, just to kind of show you the, the measurements. So, the house on the north end is about seventy-one feet from the center of the road. The proposed deck is shown here. It's an eleven-by-eleven deck, and that's sixty feet from the center of the road. The thirty-three-foot right-of-way is shown here, so the resulting deck would only be twenty-five feet away. Staff had outlined with the applicant, uh, the reasons for supporting the variance. Mainly that the house was built back in nineteen ten, prior to, uh, current setback standards. Um, the township was okay with this type of, uh, encroachment into the setback. Uh, so, we are recommending approval of the request. I don't see the applicant here, uh, but I would stand for any questions. As indicated, the, uh, township, uh, did recommend approval at their July meeting. Just that the taxes are current on the property, and they have a right to farm ordinance. So, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah. Any questions by the board?
Mr. Chair, I don't, uh, Greg, as far as, you know, about half this deck would have probably been approved anyhow without a, a variance because it's within eighteen inches, maybe, is it half, or three-fourths of it is within eighteen inches? Or don't you have a sense of that?
I think it, um, Mr. Ch- Mr. Chair, Commissioner Huber, um, it's just over half 'cause the slope kind of starts where the door is. So, it would be the south end of the, of the deck would meet it, but right about here, right about where the door starts, going this way is where it wouldn't meet it. So, it's about fifty percent.
Thank you.
I'll, um, I'll add a little bit to the, to this. Um, since I grew up in Saint Benedict, um, I actually asked two of my brothers yesterday at a graduation. But they remember, um, this used to be a bar in the early days. Prior to Tony Deitch, even owning it, and then Tony and Vera had a bar there, I think, until, uh, maybe the early sixties. But if you, uh, look at the front yard, uh, coming out from the house there, it's fairly flat. And then there's a retaining wall of, uh, fieldstone and mortar that's, could probably, probably be a hundred years old. And, and then it drops down, and then there's another lower area of grass. Underneath that grass is actually the parking lot of the bar, where the bar used to be. So, the front yard is terraced. And I'll also point out, uh, you know, this is the little hamlet, uh, former hamlet of Saint Benedict. And a few months ago, just, I don't know, a couple hundred yards down the road, which was across from the church, we okayed, uh, variance for the people that remodeled that house, and they wanted to put up a double garage.
Yep.
And, uh, so I go down there all the time, uh, visit my parents' grave and stuff, and I was there Saturday checking out this. It's very, very nice. So, anyway, that's my two cents worth on it. Any questions by, uh, board members? If not, uh, this is a public hearing. If anyone in the audience wishes to address this issue, please step up to the podium, sign in your name and address, and, um, state your case. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move we close the public hearing.
Motion by Commissioner Watson. Is there a second?
I second that motion by Robbie.
Uh, second by Commissioner Robbie. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, um, one at a time. Commissioner Watson.
Aye.
Commissioner Vonhoff.
Aye.
Commissioner Huber.
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman, yes. Com- uh, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Hentges.
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson. All right, um, uh, will motion passes six-zero with, um, no response from Commissioner Johnson. So, I'll entertain a motion on this.
Mr. Chair, based on criteria for variance consideration, and I recommend approval of the requested variance to reduce the thirty-five-foot right-of-way setback to twenty-seven feet in order to construct a deck, enlisting the town board has recommended approval.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion by Commissioner Huber, a second by Commissioner Watts, uh, Vonhoff. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll vote, uh, one at a time. Commissioner Watson.
Aye.
Commissioner Vonhoff.
Aye.
Commissioner Huber.
Aye.
Commissioner Hartman, aye. Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hart, uh, Robbie.
Aye.
And Commissioner Hentges.
Aye.
Motion passes seven-zero. That's it for the Board of Adjustment, so I'll entertain a meeting to adjourn the Board of Adjustment.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn the Board of Adjustment.
Motion by Commissioner Watson, is there a second?
Barbara Johnson, second. This is Commissioner Hentges.
Uh, second by Commissioner Hentges. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye, one at a time. Commissioner Watson.
Aye.
Commissioner Vonhoff.
Aye.
Commissioner Huber.
Aye.
Commissioner Hartman, aye. Commissioner Robbie.
Aye.
Commissioner Hentges.
Aye.
And Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes seven-zero. This meeting is adjourned.
Good evening, and welcome to the Scott County Planning Advisory Commission meeting for Monday, August tenth, two thousand twenty. I call the meeting to order, and the first item of business is our roll call. I will call the roll. We have, uh, some commissioners in attendance, and some here electronically. Commissioner Hentges.
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman.
Here.
Commissioner Huber.
Here.
Commissioner Robbie.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Vonhoff, here. Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Also present this evening, uh, we have, uh, Brad Davis, our planning manager. Marty Schmitz, our zoning administrator. Greg Wagner, our senior planner. Nathan Hall, our associate planner. Barb Simonson, the deputy clerk to the board. And here electronically, County Commissioner Tom Wolfe. Uh, we will start with our first item of business this evening, which is the approval of the July thirteenth Planning Advisory Commission meeting minutes. All the commissioners been sent a copy of the minutes. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes as printed? Hearing now, uh, hearing none, I will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the July thirteenth meeting.
I still move, this is, uh, Robbie, to approve the minutes.
I have a motion by Commissioner Robbie. Do I have a second?
I'll second. This is Commissioner Hentges.
Second by Commissioner Hentges. I will call for the roll on this. On all of our votes this evening, we will be calling for the roll. All in favor of, uh, approving the minute, Commissioner Hentges?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartman?
Aye.
Commissioner Huber?
Aye.
Commissioner Robbie? Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Vonhoff, aye. Commissioner Watson?
Abstain.
The minutes are approved with six ayes and one abstention. Uh, the, so, next item of business, our consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered by the planning commission to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a planning commission board member or a member of the public so request, in which event, the item will be moved from the consent agenda to be considered separately. There were two items on the item, on the consent agenda, and I will read the first one, which has been moved and will be continued to September Planning Advisory Commission meeting. Uh, that item is three-one. It was a public hearing on, uh, the Highway one sixty-nine commercial final plat. The number was twenty seventeen dash zero zero three. There's a request for Highway one sixty-nine commercial final plat consisting of six slots on thirty-seven acres. That matter has been moved, or has been continued to September, uh, Planning Advisory Commission meeting, and will be noticed again at that time. So, consequently, we only have one item on the consent agenda this evening. That is the Diane Jackson rezoning, uh, request, which is, uh, number twenty twenty dash zero three eight. It's a request for rezoning of seventy-six point nine eight acres from A one agricultural preservation district to A three agricultural preservation density district. Location is Section thirteen in Spring Lake Township, and the current zoning is rural residential one. That is item three, number two, on the consent agenda. Since that's a singular item on the consent agenda for consideration, I would ask if anyone would like to have that removed from the consent agenda at this time for consideration.
Before you take action on that, commissioners, um, the language in, on the agenda was incorrect. Um, it's actually a rezoning of three point six acres from RR one to RR two rural residential single family. That was, uh, typo in the agenda.
Yep. RR one to RR two.
Correct, in Spring Lake Township.
Okay. I will read that request, uh, with those corrections in there. Thank you, uh, Mr. Schmidt, for making that correction. The request for rezoning of, uh, uh, three point six acres from RR one to RR two agricultural district. So, uh, that is the request, and we'd aim to like to have that removed. Seeing no one, uh, no commissioners want to have it removed, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a, a motion by Commissioner Watson. Do I have a second?
Second, Barbara Johnson.
Uh, second by Commissioner Johnson. At this time, I will recall a roll of, uh, roll call vote. Uh, Commissioner Hentges?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartman?
Aye.
Commissioner Huber?
Aye.
Commissioner Robbie?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Vonhoff, aye. Commissioner Watson?
Aye.
The motion passes. If you came this evening, uh, for that matter, uh, the Diane Jackson rezoning, that has been approved on the consent agenda. Our next item is a public hearing. Uh, Shakopee Bowl LLC is the applicant. It's number twenty twenty dash zero one eight. A request for conditional use permit amendment to operate an indoor commercial recreational use bowling alley, an outdoor commercial recreational use volleyball, wiffle ball, and barn restaurant. Location is Section twenty-two. It's in Louisville Township. The current zoning is C one. And Mr. Wagner will be making the staff presentation this evening. Good evening, Mr. Wagner.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, commissioners. Um, on the screen is the site location map of the, uh, five-acre parcel. Uh, it's located, again, in Section twenty-two Louisville Township. So, for locational purposes, uh, to the west is U.S. Highway one sixty-nine, uh, to the north is County seventy-eight. So, this is just to the south of the one sixty-nine forty-one interchange. And the property is located on the north side of one hundred and thirty-third Street, uh, east of the new frontage road, Louisville Road. Now, on the screen is the aerial map of the property. Uh, so you can see the bowling alley, uh, building on the north end of the site. Uh, to the west of that is volleyball courts, and then to the south is the, uh, parking. So, this is a twenty nineteen photo. Um, as many of you from the county know, the bowling alley facility has been here for many years. Um, the original CUP was permitted in nineteen seventy-eight. Um, that CUP did include various outdoor activities. Volleyball has been there for many years. Uh, also, property to the west was used for some softball fields at, at one time. Um, but mainly, the bowling alley has consistently been there. Um, back in nineteen ninety-eight, uh, there was a CUP amendment which allowed for other uses, such as weddings, flea markets, um, car shows, things that could be held as, uh, small or special events. Um, so that amendment was done in nineteen ninety-eight. And then, uh, the current ownership, uh, purchased the facility in twenty eighteen. Uh, so they've been operating it for the last couple of years. Um, it's now known as Shakopee Bowl. As many of you probably know, it's been Louisville lanes, I think Canterbury lanes at one time. Uh, but they've been, uh, successfully, the last couple of years, uh, doing some things to it to, uh, attract more local customers to the, to the site. Um, so what they're asking for tonight is a amendment to the CUP. Um, the facility consists of, uh, twenty-four bowling lanes, and then there's a barn and restaurant inside. So, what we're looking to do is amend the CUP, uh, have it be indoor commercial recreation, outdoor commercial recreation, which I'll describe what that means in a second, and then the barn and restaurant, uh, part of the facility. On the screen now is the, uh, site plan that was in the, uh, in the staff report. So, again, the bowling alley to the west, you will see the volleyball courts. Those are still in operation. Um, but to the south of the building is the major changes. Uh, what the applicants have, uh, are, are looking to do, what they're working on, is adding a fifty, fifty-by-fifty patio, which they've already added and have been using, uh, for the last couple of months since the, uh, governor and the state have allowed outdoor seating for restaurants. They've been able to use that patio for customers, um, so they've been operating that for the last two months. Um, to the east of that is a thirty-by-fifty patio, um, which, per the narrative, they intend to use more for some recreational games, uh, have a fire pit there, have some, uh, beanbag toss, you know, some recreational games that people can, can do there. Uh, and then the other thing they want to add is a one-hundred-foot-by-one-hundred-foot, uh, wiffle ball field. Um, so those are the, kind of the main changes, is having some more outdoor activity on the property. Um, the next site plan that was, uh, let's see, this way. So, it's got, this, this one's upside down, uh, based, but you see the fifty-by-fifty patio, the other patio with the beanbag boards, um, and then the wiffle ball field. The aerial photo that was in the, uh, staff report here is a pretty clear, uh, I should say, more clear, um, depiction of what they've done, uh, over the last year or so. Uh, you can see the two patio areas up near the building. They work with the building department to get permits for, uh, putting in doorways to those patios. They have the wiffle ball area defined. Uh, but one of the really beneficial things I think they've done out there is redone and restriped the parking lot. Um, going back to this photo, you can see there's, uh, no striping, no definitive, um, you know, parking lines or anything like that. So, they've done a lot of work to kind of do some upgrades to the property. So, going to the, the staff report in the conditions, um, that we're looking to put on here, um, the way we did this in the staff report is go through the existing conditions and then kind of outline what, what's being changed. Um, so when we look at the conditions, so I'm, I'm putting those on the screen now for those following along online. Um, conditions one through four, um, mainly dealt with, uh, updates to the language with the new ownership, ordinance standards, and what, what we did with a lot of conditions in here is dealt with, uh, the county's large assembly permit. Um, some of you may have been on the planning commission, I think it was about ten or twelve years ago, or maybe, maybe a little longer. Um, the county has always had a large assembly permit, um, but it was kind of, I think it was under administrative ordinance. Well, a, a number of years ago, we amended that and brought it into the zoning ordinance, so it's a zoning permit. So, any use in the county that attracts two hundred and fifty or more people is now regulated by a large assembly. So, what, what we're doing with these conditions is pulling out some language that was put in back in nineteen ninety-eight when those owners wanted to do outdoor events. Um, but some of these conditions really would be reviewed now under the large assembly ordinance and the large assembly permit. So, when you see a lot of strike-through, it's not that we're just getting rid of that language. There's a different way we would regulate those things. So, this permit really will apply to the bowling, as I said, the outdoor commercial, uh, recreation, which is the volleyball, the patio games, and the wiffle ball field. The other uses like antique shows, flea markets, et cetera, those are part of the CUP up to a certain number of people. And I'll, I'll talk about that, uh, in a little bit. Conditions five and six, uh, dealt with parking, uh, and lighting, um, and how much parking is required. Um, so, as indicated in the staff report, we calculate based on different uses. So, we have the bowling alley use, which, uh, requires one space for every two thousand square feet. The restaurant bar is calculated at one parking space for every two and a half, uh, seats. And then we expanded that seating, the restaurant seating, to the new patio. Um, so we calculated the patio at one space for two and a half, uh, seats as well. So, with their new parking lot striping, the ordinance requires a hundred and forty-seven spaces. They have a hundred and forty-eight, uh, plus six additional handicaps. So, they're accommodating the parking, um, as required by ordinance. And then, right now, in the, in the parking lot, the center of the parking lot has, uh, the common tall overhead power, or, uh, parking lot lights. Um, so, they, they've had those for some time. Regarding the wiffle ball field, the applicant has indicated that they might want to do some lighting once the wiffle ball field is constructed next year. He's indicated that would be similar lighting, just maybe a little shorter. Um, so, uh, conditions five and six really talk about that. Condition seven, uh, just details what events they can have out there, how they develop the site with the bowling alley, the outdoor facilities. Uh, it references the sizes of the patios that they're proposing, the fire pit that they're adding, and the wiffle ball field. What we'll do is, when this goes to the board, we'll stamp the plans that are attached to the report with a certain date. So, if they come back in the future and want to amend the plans, we, we'll be able to reference, uh, the date they were approved. Uh, condition eight stipulates the liquor license, which is approved by the county board, uh, and also the township board. Uh, and then, now we get into some conditions, like nine and ten. Conditions nine and ten previously dealt with, um, fire protection, medical services, security for events, um, solid waste. So, those conditions, if the applicant were to do, like, uh, an outdoor event that had over two hundred and fifty people, they would need a large assembly permit, and through that permit, we bring in the sheriff's department, we bring in medical professionals, other county departments, and look at how that one-time event is going to be regulated, making sure they have security personnel out there. making sure they have security personnel out there, things like that. So those conditions are removed from the CUP, and they would be reviewed under a large assembly. Condition number eleven talks about hours of operation. We kind of split this to their food and liquor sales because there's certain things that they're allowed to do with their approved liquor license. Under the state liquor license, they are allowed to serve till one AM. They can have the one-hour extension to two AM. So that's regulated by the liquor license. Under state statute, they can also have a compact and contiguous patio. So bars and restaurants are allowed to have something compact and contiguous to the restaurant for an outdoor patio. So that's kind of something that's more regulated by the state. So the hours here would allow them to serve food and liquor on the patio adjacent to the bar until one AM. What we are regulating, as far as hours, well, maybe the next part. When they met with the township, it was agreed that they could, the volleyball, wiffle ball, outdoor athletic events. So those could go until ten PM Monday, or excuse me, Sunday through Thursday, and then eleven PM on Friday and Saturday. So if they have a volleyball tournament or something out there, volleyball leagues, those can go till ten PM, Sunday through Thursday, and then Friday, Saturday till eleven. The next thing that the applicant wanted to do was add some acoustic music, some ambiance to the patio. So the next paragraph kind of talks about when that music can be played. So this is commonly at outdoor patios, you might have one or two people with a guitar and an amplifier just playing acoustic music while people are eating and drinking on the patio. That's what he's anticipating, you know, doing there. That amplified music can go until ten PM all day. So that has to be shut down at ten PM. And that's a common time that we find in other communities with music on patios is that ten PM is kind of the shutdown. Conditions... Condition twelve, we're eliminating that prohibits camping or open fires. The only exception is the fire pit. Condition thirteen, and some of these have been renumbered here, but conditions thirteen, fifteen, sixteen are things that again, would be reviewed under a large assembly permit. So that's like restroom facilities. And, let's see, what else is there? Oh, operation plan for large events. So again, security personnel, things like that. And then, conditions fourteen and seventeen, back in nineteen ninety-eight, dealt with septic compliance. The septic system here has passed a compliance inspection in nineteen ninety-eight. And again, when it was purchased in twenty eighteen, the applicant is taking the county's recommendation that they do pumping on a quarterly basis due to the high volume that typically bars and restaurants see. So they're complying with our recommendations on that. Earlier this afternoon, we received comments from the planner from Louisville Township. The applicant has met with the township a couple of times over the last few months. So it was forwarded to via email. This is from Cindy Nash, the town planner. She noted three things in her review, or in the township's discussion. Number one was pertaining to noise. So she referenced that our Shakopee, Savage, Parakeet, our large cities, they measure noise past ten PM, which is, they do it based on audible noise at the property line rather than decibel level. We, she made that more as a comment because when we look at the city ordinances, they have established standards for outdoor patios. And so, City of Shakopee has about ten conditions that they apply to a bar or restaurant. We don't really have that adopted in ordinance. But we feel that the music part was the concerning thing with amplified music. So the applicants agreed to shut that down at ten o'clock. So I can let the town board speak more on that. Number two was pertaining to township ordinances for noise and parking. There was a condition, existing condition about parking, that there should be no parking on any township, county, or state roads. We're maintaining that condition, and then we're adding one that I'll show you here in a minute. And then she had proposed some other conditions to reflect the discussion that the applicant had with the town board last week. So mainly, the change was to condition number three, and how that's phrased. What we're doing is splitting the uses as athletic events. So the volleyball, wiffle ball, and outdoor patio activities would be under A. And then the outdoor events consisting of periodic special events, such as the car shows, flea markets, farmers' markets, weddings, et cetera. We're putting in a specific number that they would have to be less than two hundred and fifty people. If they would want to be more than two hundred and fifty people, they have to apply for the large assembly. So we're making that change, so that's fine. We're duplicating that in condition number four here, that any one-time outdoor event exceeding two hundred and fifty people is subject to that ordinance. Down at the bottom, under the hours of operation, I think I cleaned that up a little bit. So I kind of split that into two conditions. Hours of operation for serving food and liquor, this is new, so this is not in the packet, shall be nine AM to one AM, as otherwise established under a liquor license. Hours for outdoor events, specifically volleyball courts and wiffle ball, shall be limited to the nine AM to ten PM, Sunday through Thursday, eleven PM Friday, Saturday. And then, broke out the live music condition into a separate deal, which defines the hours from nine AM to ten PM. That's all days of the week. And then, Ms. Nash recommended some other language that just talked about nuisance complaints from the music or gatherings. So we added that in there. And then the only other condition she recommended would be a new condition number fourteen. Operation of the property shall be in conformance with the Louisville Township ordinances, including but not limited to nuisance and parking ordinances as amended from time to time. So we had the parking condition in there. This just supports it if the township were to adopt something different. So I think I covered what we're proposing to change. I mean, it's really adding some outdoor activities. The applicant, Dave Johnson, is here. He may want to add how they've been doing here. And we have representatives from the township. So I can let them speak and then answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Wagner. Are there any questions from Mr. Wagner, from the commissioners, before we move on here?
Yes, but I'll just start with one. Greg, when they do a noise test, for example, Saturday, when I went out there, you've got a lot of noise coming from the highway. So when they do that noise test, do they take, is that taken into consideration that there's other noise from the area, like the block plant, the mining, the Demcon landfill, businesses around there, traffic on the frontage road, traffic on one sixty-nine? How do they...
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hartman. I don't have a lot of background or knowledge on the noise. But I know, you know, our mining operations, there's been some noise studies done for those. Because I know when severs went in, there were some concerns from the residents there. And they provided some documentation based on the equipment, like they were going to have amplified music as well. So they provided some noise decibel based on the speaker they were going to have. But we had a study, I forget which mining operation, I don't think it was Brian Rock, I think it was further south. But there was a noise study done along one sixty-nine, which kind of covered that section of the corridor. And I remember when we put the severs report together, they had factored in for that study the background ambient noise from the traffic on one sixty-nine. So I think they used that. So they're able to do that to figure out, okay, what is the noise? Just background, and then they can add in things like amplified music or just people there, and do measurements that way. But yeah, they would, they would need to take that into account because yes, you do get a lot of noise from the highway, so.
It's in an area too where there's a lot of jake breaking going on by the semis, you know, coming down the hills and stuff.
Yep, so I'm sure with any noise study, they have to get a baseline of what's there already and then, you know, and then measure what's going to be added to it.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Commissioner.
Mr. Wagner, I'm looking at item number eleven. And this certainly looks like it's a standard boilerplate for restaurant and bar operations. Is that a fair statement?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Watson, yep, yes, that would be true. So, we have, you know, back in May with the COVID issues going on, we were kind of informed that the governor was going to open up outdoor seating as one thing, patios and stuff. So one of the things we looked at in the county was, well, what establishments do we have? So we have the Shakopee Bowling Alley down towards Jordan. We have the Jordan Supper Club and their brew hall in the back. So as indicated before, a lot of these things are regulated more under the liquor license, and when can you serve? So we can establish hours. Most restaurants are going to be open till, you know, probably ten o'clock. A bowling alley is different, you have a different, you know, clientele. But yes, they're permitted a liquor license. And under that liquor license, they're allowed to do certain things until a certain time of night. So that would be common. I mean, we have the Jordan Supper Club with their brew hall in the back. They can be up until one, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff at this time? The applicant would like to come up to the podium. And when you start, please start with your name. And there's a sign-in sheet, there should be at the podium there, please sign in.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
This is Barbara Johnson.
Yes, Commissioner Johnson.
I just wanted to ask if they had an idea of how many parking spaces they actually have.
Okay, yes. Do you want the applicant to answer that, Commissioner Johnson? He's at the podium right now.
Sure, sure.
Okay, he will address that.
Okay, Dave Johnson, owner, Shakopee Bowl.
Welcome.
Thank you. Right now, we have one hundred and forty-eight parking spots, plus six handicap, plus two dedicated service personnel parking spots.
Okay. Did that answer your question, Commissioner Johnson?
Yes. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from any of the commissioners before we start here?
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Robbie. I do have a question for Greg or the applicant.
Okay.
Greg may have addressed this in his presentation and may have missed it, but is there any plans for pyrotechnic shows or aerial fireworks during the summer months?
I think I can let the applicant address that, for your, Commissioner Robbie.
Absolutely not, no. I don't have any desire to do anything like that.
Did you, did you hear that, Commissioner Robbie?
Could you repeat that? I didn't get that.
Absolutely not. I don't have any intentions to do anything firework-related.
That's fine, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. We'll have the applicant, go ahead and make your presentation or comments that you'd like to add.
I think Greg did a great job presenting what we're looking to do. I guess the best, I think, would be if you have any questions specifically about certain ideas, I'll be able to elaborate a little bit more and go in depth.
Okay, Commissioner Hartman.
Dave, when you do flea markets, I've been to a few in my life, they set up anywhere, they'll set up in grass fields and stuff. Is that where you set up the flea markets?
We haven't had one. I've been the owner since September of nineteen, oh, sorry, two thousand and eighteen. We haven't had one. It was in the previous CUP. So I don't want to limit myself. And one thing I've learned about owning the bowling alley for just under two years is it's a lot of challenges. It's a bowling alley. In order for me to be long-term successful, I need summer business. I need to generate income from the end of the bowling season, May, June, July, August. So I haven't done a flea market, I haven't planned on doing one, but I also don't want to take it out of the CUP and limit myself. But where they would set up, yeah, they would set up probably somewhere on the property, whether it's off to the grassy area or, you know, in parking stalls.
Okay, Commissioner Hartman.
Dave, how many bowling alleys are there in this metro area down here?
In the metro or Scott County?
In, just like Scott County, surrounding Scott County.
Scott County, you're testing my geography. There's got to be less than five.
Just New Prague, isn't it?
Lakeville considers Scott County?
No.
So, yeah, just probably New Prague.
Bill Plains closed?
Yeah.
It's closed?
Yeah, so, and there are only eight lanes in New Prague. So we have twenty-four.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Greg, if he did have a flea market, he would, if he had over two hundred and fifty people, he'd have to get a separate permit for that anyway, wouldn't he?
Yeah, Commissioner, or Mr. Chair, Commissioner Johnson, yes. So, we would have to look at how that operates. You know, we've always struggled a little bit with the large assembly where you have an event that's going to be stretched out through the day. We could try and anticipate based on numbers of people that he vendors, maybe. But if he's going to say, I'm going to be open from nine AM to four PM, well, you're probably not going to get two hundred and fifty people. You may in the morning, I guess, but at one time. So we'd have to look at, you know, if he wants to do something like that, what do we anticipate for attendance at an event like that? If we feel we're getting to two fifty, you know, the two fifty to five hundred is an administrative large assembly permit. So it's reviewed by county staff as well as the township. So we could, you know, maybe contact the sheriff's department, you know, for assistance with traffic management if we think it's something that's going to be a large, you know, generator of people. But, you know, two fifty at any one time seems like a lot for something like that. But we'd have to see what he proposes. But if we know he's going to have an event, you know, where it's going to be like an outdoor concert, where those are more easy to regulate because we know there's going to be tickets or something like that sold, so we can count people. The things that stretch out all day, I guess we'd have to look at the duration and what we anticipate for people. But it's possible he would need a large assembly.
Okay, that answers my question, thank you.
Commissioner, I have one from Commissioner Huber first.
Go ahead. Mr. Chair, for the applicant, the main issue here would probably be noise from music and that. Is there ways you can keep, I see in the narrative, there's talk about pointing the speakers towards the highway, once they extend towards the river and that. I assume that would help. Are you planning to think about those type of things to minimize the noise going to the residents up on the bluff?
Yeah, one thing that we have is on the east side of the property line, we have mature big trees that will help prevent sound from going to the east. Also, on point here, where this patio is here, off to this line of patio, it's fifty feet long. We're going to construct a eight-foot-high, or sorry, six-foot-high wood cedar fence. And then, right here in this corner is where the musicians, two or three musicians for acoustic music would set up, which would help amplify it towards one sixty-nine and the freeway. And again, you know, it's just acoustic music is more of a background, nice, easygoing. You still want people to enjoy themselves, sit on a patio, enjoy a beverage, enjoy food. With the wiffle ball field being added, my intentions there, I've been on the Shakopee baseball board for six years. Um, with the wiffle ball field being added, my intentions there, um, I've been on the Shakopee baseball board for six years and very involved in the hockey program. We have, uh, there are forty-seven teams had team parties last year at the bowling alley. Um, we're a sponsor on the high, I have the, uh, Shakopee Community Center hockey boards. So that's a thousand dollars a year that we donate there. Uh, we're a fifteen-hundred-dollar major sponsor on the high school boys hockey team. And we're also a major sponsor on the girls hockey team in Shakopee. Um, we held nineteen different fundraisers last year at the bowling alley. Uh, one of them was Shakopee High School Baseball, which I'm a volunteer coach as a JV coach with Tom Schlepper, the high school coach. Uh, they, they raised thirteen thousand dollars in four hours. So the wiffle ball field, the intention is to have kids playing, um, it's going to be astroturf. So I've talked to a couple of different people that run, um, we have Special Olympics at the bowling alley on Saturday mornings. We're going to use it for like a miracle field too, so kids can go out and do stuff, uh, movie night on the patio, you know, play, uh, the movie Sandlot and let kids have popcorn and, you know, Freezy Pop. So it's more of a family entertainment center, I'm not looking for this to be a bar nightclub first. This is a bowling alley, family, community. For me, it's, I'm very geared towards sports, so it's a sports bar, not a bar nightclub, that's my intention.
Thank you.
Yep, sorry.
Commissioner Hartman, I mean.
Another question, Dave, um, from going out there many times over the years, uh, the, the water drainage, I was looking at that Saturday. And from what I can see and what I remember, the water pretty much runs off all the parking lots onto the grass. And then there are times with heavy rain, probably, uh, water comes down, um, one hundred and thirty-third street and sometimes it runs the ditch and comes across your parking lot. Uh, anyway, um, I don't know if that's a concern or.
No, um, for the wiffle ball field, um, all the way around the hundred-foot perimeter here, uh, they need to construct concrete curbing. So this will end up being concrete curb all the way around. So it'll be raised up from the blacktop surface, just like a normal street curb would be. Uh, the tension there, when you install the astroturf, you have to install a two-by-six, one inch down from the top of the curb and then fasten to that. So I actually think it's going to help with our drainage because the water coming from the top of the parking lot, which is on the south side, rather than coming all the way through here, is going to hit curbing. Um, and then eventually I'm probably going to have to build a little peninsula there to get the water even further down. Um, it's already in thought. We, uh, we were forced to do the parking lot right away. It, uh, the spring of nineteen, we had a lot of rain and the parking lot was in bad shape. And all that water got underneath and then it froze and then it thawed, froze, thawed, then popped. So we invested about a hundred and forty thousand dollars into the new asphalt parking lot, so. So we had to do it quickly without a lot of planning, just because it was, it was pretty bad.
Any other questions for the applicant right now? We may have further questions, uh, so thank you very much, David. I'd like to hear from the township if you're here, I know you're here.
I'm missing a pen right here, I'll get it later. Dave has worked with the township for almost a year now in there, and I think we got it pretty well worked out. Um, the only thing we have concern is about the noise and when we go with the decimals that Cindy recommended, I do not see a problem on it. And as far as the parking lot with water, since they paved that, that water heads to the, uh, west pretty good off of there. It doesn't, the other parking lot was potholes and a mess. But, uh, yeah, I think we got everything worked out. And like I say, he claims the parking is good, may have some extra additional parking on the west side if they need it. And, um, I think everything on these conditions should work out.
Any other questions here? Thank you for weighing in on that, I appreciate it.
Bob Peeper Louisville Township, um, on the noise regulation, um, our planner, yeah, she had described how, how that would work. And I kind of looked some up today. Um, when you go by audio ob, can't think of the word, audio at the boundary. What you're doing is, is you're at the boundary and it would be the audible noise coming from the bowling or the patio itself. You're going to have the background noise of the highway. Well, the noise coming off of the patio would have to be louder than the existing noise that's there. That would trigger the, a complaint or whatever. Talking with Dave and working with him, he's more willing to make sure that isn't going to happen because he doesn't want to get any complaints. Um, one other thing that Dave didn't mention. On this one, and I believe Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, you were talking about maybe purchasing this sliver of land between the front-end road and your property line, which would give him a little more parking if he needed it. Um, so with that, we were kind of satisfied that he will be able to meet his, meet his parking. Because if you look at it, if he's going to have a car show or whatever, classic cars and whatever aren't going to take up one spot right next to each other. They're going to want distance. And then if he has anything else going on, you know, he should have plenty of parking with the added part there. So if you have any other questions?
I don't have any, thank you, Bob, thanks for.
All right, thank you.
This is a public hearing, if anyone else has any other comments to add at this time, or any questions for staff or the applicant to the township, uh, present, they certainly can come up to the podium.
Uh, Mr. Chair, just to remind you, we did invite notices to about sixty, seventy property owners to, if they are not able to come tonight, to be able to tune in live as we're streaming and then email any comments that they might have.
Okay.
So if you don't mind me just giving us another minute to see if any emails come in.
We absolutely can wait and just check on that to make sure that, uh, if we have any comment or questions, that we will address those. Yeah, I just have one question for the applicant, Dave, if you want to come back in. Have you ever had a situation where you've had to have people park out on the county road?
No, not yet.
Okay.
No, we won't.
Okay. And your plan for if you were going to buy that adjacent property is if your business improved and, and, and you've started seeing events where you're getting more and more people and the parking wasn't sufficient, that, that would be your plan?
When we purchased the bowling alley, the five acres, the land to the west of us, to the right of Louisville Road, we have a first right to refusal on that property, that are already established price.
Sure.
So before COVID, um, we were already, I was already going to purchase it, but now I'm just waiting.
Right.
So a little different times.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I have a question for Mr. Wagner. So when we were discussing this, the draft from, um, Cindy Nash, uh, at the township, is that the one you're recommending? Then these, these corrections that you, we went through here on, on this sheet here, is that, is that what would be the recommended, uh, verbiage on this? Is that, that's kind of what I was getting, but I just want to verify that with you so there's, so we're clear on that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, um, so what, what I emailed out, um, was what was received from Cindy Nash. But as I was going through, um, just to kind of update our standard form, because she just, she had put, you know, proposed conditions with her Nash draft changes. Um, when it got to this condition for the hours, that thing started to get really long.
Yep.
Um, and then as reading through it, essentially all, all I did there, um, was just to kind of separate out the, the overall hours of preparation for the food and liquor sales, um, and then the outdoor events, which is kind of one aspect of it. Uh, but then number twelve now would be everything related to the music and noise. Um, so she really, what she really added in there was language that I think is more common in cities. Um, so just kind of separating those two out, so we have, you know, he, here's the hours for the other things and here's, you know, more pertaining to the music and the amplified stuff. Um, and then the only other one she really added would be now condition fourteen, which references any township ordinances that would be applicable, um, you know, likely down the road. So there, both sets of conditions are very similar, I just took one that was getting rather long and just broke it into two.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, um, should we close the public hearing?
Uh, we're still waiting.
We're still waiting?
We're good.
Are we good? Oh, okay, absolutely. Well, we have waited, uh, and had staff check on any electronic questions or comments that might have come in. And seeing as we're ending, I will entertain a motion now to, uh, close the public hearing. I have a motion by, uh, Commissioner Hartman, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
A second by Commissioner Watson. At this time, I will call a roll call vote on closing the public hearing. Uh, Commissioner Hensches.
Aye.
Commissioner Hartman.
Here, aye, aye.
Commissioner Huber.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Robbie.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Von Hoff, aye. Commissioner Watson.
Aye.
This public hearing is closed at this time. At this time, I will entertain, uh, a motion on the item before us or further discussion, whatever the pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, um, based upon the criteria for approval listed in the staff report, I recommend approval of the conditional use permit amended for Shakopee Bowl LLC to operate an indoor commercial recreational use bowling alley, outdoor commercial recreational use volleyball, wiffle ball and a bar restaurant, noting that the township has, uh, worked collaboratively with the both parties and they are in agreement.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Watson, do I have a second?
I'll make, uh, second that motion.
Second by Commissioner Hartman, is there any further discussion before I call for a vote on this item before us?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to, uh, thank, uh, the owner Dave Johnson and his partner. We're taking this building and business and rejuvenating it and rejuvenating the area and all the things that you're doing for the community and the youth organizations and people that want to bowl and all these other activities. And I also want to thank the Louisville Township Board members, John Weckman and Bob Peiper, who are always committed to their jobs and they do their homework, they've been working with this owner for a year. They, they cross their Ts, they dot their Is, they do a hell of a job. And, uh, I just, I'm so glad it all came together and, uh, looking forward to, uh, spending some time out there. Thank you all so much.
Well noted, Commissioner Hartman. Any other comments before I call for a vote at this time? Hearing none, I will call for a vote.
Thank Gary Hartman for his comments.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Uh, I will now call for a vote. Uh, Commissioner Hensches.
Aye.
Commissioner Hartman.
Aye.
Commissioner Huber.
Aye.
Commissioner Robbie.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Von Hoff, aye. Commissioner Watson.
Aye.
The motion passes, has been approved, thank you very much, uh, for coming in this evening. And again, thank you to the township for Bob and, and John for, uh, being here this evening as well. Um, we can move on now to our next item. It is the, uh, planning manager's report, Mr. Davis is already at the podium and making the report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I'll update you on items that you, uh, made a recommendation on. Um, the county board on August fourth approved the request for rezoning of forty acres from A-one to A-three. Applicants there were Denise Edstrom and Arden, Arnold and Patricia Ganson, that was in Bell Plain Township. They also approved the request to rezone forty acres from UER to UERC. Randy Kubisch was the applicant on that, that was in, uh, section thirty-six of Helena Township. Finally, they approved the request for an interim use permit to operate a mud jacket and home extended business in New Market Township. Um, coming up on the next board meeting on August eighteenth, so that's next Tuesday, um, I'll be before the board asking them to formally adopt the zoning subdivision ordinance revisions that we've been working on for the last year and a half to two years. Um, we had the public hearing on that last month and, um, we now are at a point where we'll take it to the board for final adoption. We've had a workshop with the board to provide them a summary of some of the key changes and issues that we've been working on. So I feel that they're fully informed and, um, prepared to, to take some action on that next Tuesday. Um, assuming that then, uh, moves to adoption, those will then become the, um, development rules in place for any applicants that come to us after that date. Um, in September, I think we have a handful of items that will be before you, um, maybe a variance or two and a couple of public hearings. We may see a public hearing that generates a lot of interest and so we'll work through that and make sure that we manage that well in this environment and, and, and we're, uh, open to people being able to come and provide comments on a proposed use. Uh, we can update you on that more if that happens in September. If it doesn't happen in September, then it could move into the October time period. Uh, we'll continue to meet in this format where I'll ask at least four of you to be in person and three, um, uh, remote by phone. I'm trying to circulate that as much as I can. It is helpful to have at least the chairs of the two, uh, commissions, the board and the commission here. Um, but outside of that, I'm trying to just rotate that as much as I can and I appreciate your flexibility in working through that. Um, I think that's all I have for updates.
I, I just have a question, if, you know, if we had a public hearing where a hundred people showed up, uh, how, how would you have staff to kind of space people out? And have you thought about that potential?
We have, yeah, we thought about that for the ordinance updates, we weren't sure exactly how many people would come. We would certainly space them out in the hallway as much as we can. We have the two TVs out in the hallway that they can monitor what's being said. If we knew that there'd be a lot of people, we would open up the room next door where there's a bunch of screens that people could monitor, uh, in a distance, you know, socially distant format. Um, so those are kind of the backup plans that we've had.
So we do have contingency on this and, and the building is, is more empty at night, so you have more space, I suppose, to, to actually accommodate that.
That's correct, yep.
Okay, good. Um, well, I'd just like to thank staff for you, uh, Brad and Craig and Barb and, and, uh, and everyone, um, Marty and Nathan for all the work you guys have done and, and I know it's difficult to work through this. It's just, it's, it's an unusual year and, and we're keeping things moving and, and I, I think that, uh, everybody is, is just doing a great job. And I also like to thank the Commissioners, uh, who are here electronically with us, uh, this evening, um, in, in doing that and, and all being part of this, um, because this is important to people and, and, you know, as we heard the applicant tonight, you know, this is an important part, you know, of, of their business and their livelihood and their life. And, and all these issues that come before us are important and being able to respond to that is important. So I just want to commend staff and the Commissioners for, for making those adjustments and doing that.
Yeah, I want to re, return that, I know, um, how difficult this has been to work in this different environment, difficult to participate by phone. Um, but it is important that we keep meeting every month to move these projects along. Difficult to participate by phone, um, but it is important that we keep meeting every month to move these projects along. We've been just as busy frankly, as we've been in the past with applications and some of the plats that you've seen. We've created probably just as many lots through this process. I shouldn't say creating, but approving them through this process than we have in any other year. So things continue to happen. Development continues to happen. Applicants still want to have action within 60 days, so we got to keep this process going. So I appreciate the time you've been putting in to keep this going.
And, and Commissioner Hartman?
I just thought of something, uh, Brad, I was going to tell you. About a month ago, um, up by, uh, towards, uh, Longville. I went to visit this, uh, he's retired, St. Paul attorney. And he's on the Cass County Soil and Water Board. And, um, he ran for Cass County County Commissioner, he make it. But anyway, he has a bunch of land and he has a solar, his own solar garden. Out in the middle of a slough. And his house is a hundred yards away. But the, the solar garden is across the road in the middle of a slough. And I asked him how that could be possible or legal. And he was explaining to me, um, why it's good for the envi, why it's a good place and, and so on. So I, I just thought I'd let you know that maybe we should revisit, um, our solar garden ordinance. Cause I know that one over in, uh, close to New Market. They wanted to put in two of them on the same, this land, and then we denied that one because it, part of it would have been in a little wetland.
Yeah, it's interesting. I, I believe our current ordinance does not allow community solar in a wetland area, so we would have to revisit that. And, and learn how maybe it is working in some other counties.
If it, if it, if it works in a wetland, if it's according to him. I mean, that kind of opens it up to maybe getting it into areas that aren't as visible.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I mean, this is a private.
It's a private.
If it's a pub, it's something that's, uh, more of a, not a public, but a industry. You have to have maintenance, you have to have roads in there and you'd have to go through the wetlands, build roads and stuff like that and. You'd have to get a lot of permits to build in a wetland now.
It's, it's on cement pillars.
I understand, but do you still have to come?
They'll just pull the pillars.
If you notice, all solar gardens have roads access to get in there for maintenance purposes. So you'd have to build roads. A private one, probably not as big a deal.
Yeah.
But when you get into a bigger, you know, ten, a one megawatt or whatever, they have to have roads coming. So I think that could be a little bit of a problem, getting permits in the wetland.
Have, have we had many private? I mean, is, is it required that, you know, except I'll see some homesteads will have, you know, three or four. Uh, that, uh, setup, you know, which is probably certainly adequate for their needs. Is, are there general requirements on that?
For a private, just single solar panel?
Yeah, or just maybe two or three of them, you'll see.
We don't have any set rules. It's, it's considered an accessory use, like a swing set or a shed, so we just need to meet some setback requirements. I don't know if we would prohibit them, the placement of them in wetlands. I'd have to follow up and see if we would even do that, if it was private.
Right, but that's a good, a good point, uh, that Commissioner Huber makes about the, the maintenance on that and, 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 you know, like the solar gardens are. Are li, literally, you know, big generator fields, you know, and even though they don't go in there often, they have to, have to access them. Interesting.
I'll look into that though, Commissioner Hartman.
And that is still kind of a new science in a sense because they never existed before.
Yeah.
And so, you know, there's going to be things that they find out about them being in there. I think that will be. Help us set up the rules. And I know we've struggled a lot with what rules to have at all as we, as, as, uh, kind of setting those up. Very good. Anything else for the cause? Anything else, uh, from any of the commissioners before we look for a motion to adjourn?
Um, this is Commissioner, Commissioner Hensches. I just wanted.
Commissioner Hensches first and then Commissioner Johnson, I think.
I just wanted to tell everyone, this is my first time, um, from home, being at a meeting from home. And when you pull up the live streaming video and just mute it and then use your phone to hear the audio, it's just like being at the meeting. It actually worked really well.
Oh, good, good. That's, that's encouraging to hear. Good.
Okay.
Uh, Commissioner Johnson, I think you were also trying to get in there.
It's loud gathering or big gatherings. What about the Renaissance? What's that situation?
A good question. Uh, Brad?
Yeah, so we've been in discussions with the Renaissance. They normally would be, um, looking at contracting with the sheriff's department for some traffic management. Um, normally those contracts would be in place by now, so there has been a lot of discussions and looking at different scenarios. Um, right now there's no contracts for this season. Um, we, like the Renaissance festival, are waiting for the state to make a determination on. Um, when on larger sizes, I think it's over 250 are going to be allowed. As of today, uh, 250 is still the max. And I don't believe the Renfest would want to operate with that type of limitation. So we're just waiting to see, I guess, what, if the, the numbers change. Um, that's about it. That's about the status.
Okay, any other questions? Not hearing anywhere. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Commissioner Huber, a second.
Okay.
Commissioner Watson. Uh, Commissioner Hensches.
Aye.
Commissioner Hartman.
Aye.
Commissioner Huber.
Aye.
Commissioner Robbie.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Von Hoff, aye. Commissioner Watson.
Aye.